Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, thank you, everybody, and welcome to this, uh, special meeting of the Placerville City Council on Friday, January the sixth. Uh, if everybody will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands the nation that we got, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, in order to make this work, since, um, I can't see any of you, uh, I'm going to hand the meeting over to Councilmember Noe to run, uh, going forward, uh, so, uh, from roll call on. So, uh, Jackie, meeting's all yours.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, we'll move on to roll call, then.
Councilmember Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Noe?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Okay, we don't have any announcements or presentations to the public, so we'll move on to item four, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the adoption.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clarici?
Yep.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Noe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to number five, discussion items, five point one, adopt a resolution confirming the proclamation of a state of emergency declared by city manager on December thirty first, two thousand twenty-two, and continue the state of emergency through January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, so, the purpose of this meeting today is to consider the adoption of this resolution, which would extend our, our emergency. As you know, um, on Saturday, Friday and Saturday, December thirtieth, thirty-first, we had heavy storms which impacted, um, our services, affected our ability, uh, as a city on our own, uh, to be able to handle that, uh, the amount of water, the water problems that we had in our city. Um, our staff, I want to compliment, did an excellent job, uh, Nick and his staff out in the field, uh, Commander Machiel, Chief Wren is not able to be here today, but Commander Machiel and their staff also, that were very helpful in monitoring the flooding that was going on and things that were happening. Um, at ten, I believe it's ten forty-one is the time on Saturday morning, I declared an emergency based on what we were seeing at that time. Um, we had several issues, uh, that were happening, uh, the flooding, that we'll show you some pictures of here in a few minutes. Um, our wastewater plant was overburdened, uh, just for example, and I'll have Rebecca talk through this in a minute. We went from approximately one point five million gallons per day up to over nine, around nine million gallons per day, or a little bit over. Um, so, it, it has a great impact on our plant, we're only, we'll, she'll show you this, but we're only able to process about three point five million gallons per day. So, between the three point five and the nine, had to go somewhere. And it went in our, what we call our flow equalization basin. However, that became full, and at that point, uh, it begins to run over, and that's what creates another emergency for us in terms of environmental issues, et cetera. We have done everything we need to do, want to compliment our, our staff out of the wastewater treatment plant, who are on twenty-four hour shifts, um, and, uh, have done all the proper reporting to the state, so, uh, they know what happened, they're aware of that. Um, and, uh, again, our staff did a great job, I believe, in, in keeping up as best we could with what was going on. Going forward, um, the, the concern is, uh, is there more to come? And we thought there was more to come Wednesday and Thursday, you probably heard all the announcements, and, uh, we geared up and were ready for that, however, Wednesday didn't happen. Thursday, we had some rain, but nothing that, uh, overwhelmed our systems at that point. Um, and at this point, going forward, um, I'll just introduce you what we, what we are looking at, um, and there are others here that can, can talk about this, but on Monday and Tuesday of next week, we're potentially looking at something that, at least at this point, appears could be similar to what we had on the thirtieth and thirty-first of December. I want to emphasize that, you know, we're ready for this, and we, we will handle it the best we can, uh, but we want to get that out, and I don't want to, um, alarm anyone. Uh, it's my hope that maybe our systems will keep up and be able to handle this, but we, we just don't know. And, um, I was telling, uh, Mr. Acuna, who is my weatherman during this, Mark has been working with the National Weather Service for years, I think twenty years, he said, and reporting is very involved and, and good at getting information, uh, for me and helping me sort it out. As you know, there's probably dozens of different weather reports you can go to to figure out what is going on, and they all say something different usually. So, trying to figure out what, what to believe and what not to believe, and what to follow, and be prepared for is, is difficult sometimes. Um, but with that, um, uh, as mentioned in the report, our recommendation is that we continue this through, um, and the reason I said January twenty-fourth is simply is that, that, we don't know when this may end, but that is your next council meeting after the tenth, um, and that will allow you to do that at your, either continue it or discontinue it on the twenty-fourth without holding a special meeting. If you want to hold a special meeting, we can, but, uh, that would avoid that, needing to do that. Um, the other thing I would mention is that, that same day, um, on, uh, December thirty-first, that we declared, uh, the, uh, county did also declare an emergency that day, um, so theirs is ongoing, their board, uh, last Tuesday reaffirmed, uh, their proclamation. Uh, our city engineer, Rebecca Neese, was in their EOC that day, uh, with them, and was great in gathering information and pushing information back and forth, also was instrumental in helping us get some additional sandbags, which we were, gave out a good amount of sandbags over the last week, um, and sand, uh, Nick kept our sand supply going, and, uh, we'll, we'll continue to do that as we anticipate potential for more. Um, before I move on now, I'd like to run through these, um, pictures that we have prepared, just, and this is just for your information, but kind of to demonstrate why we felt we needed this emergency at this time. And I'll, I want to make sure both are ready, Regina and Dave, are you ready? They have to coordinate, we've got two, two people running these, uh, to the way we're doing it, so. You ready, Regina?
Ready.
Okay, I, I'm gonna talk, I'll just briefly, we're gonna go, there's about sixty-five of these, so I'm gonna go through them very quickly, um, it's just for your information. Regina, can you maybe turn those lights down a little bit? Great, great. So, um, gotta get my bearings straight, this, this one, we can, we can move on by. So, this is on the trail, um, you can see the debris that got washed onto the trail, et cetera. Go ahead. A little video, this is from the parking lot of Mosquito Outfitters, this is the, uh, I think it's called Randolph Creek, is that correct? Randolph Creek coming down Mosquito, and then joins with, um, uh, uh, Hangtown Creek as, as it gets about to this point. Uh, and go into the next one, I think there's one more of the same video, or similar, um, shows the amount of water that comes through there, you can see where it comes under the highway, um, and pops out, out there. Um, and the big issue with this one, as you see, that water all fits through a culvert that's the bridge going across right there, and that culvert is too small, let's put it that way. Um, you can, this was jumping out before it even got to the culvert, but somewhat was maybe caused by the backup also. That's a project we probably want to look at for the future and how we can, uh, repair that. Okay, so, next. Next. Uh, this is at Clay Street, looking, looking west, um, you can see the water there, go ahead, next. Another one, you can see, again, this kind of to show how deep it was, but also the water pouring in from, from the road above there, next. Again, this is at, uh, Clay Street, I believe, again, the water coming from the east down to the west, there's the Clay Street Bridge. Moving through. Okay, next. Another picture, there's two or three at this location. Our Public Works crew, cleaning the drains. All right, next. Next. This is in the parking garage, everybody recognize that, you can see how high the water is there, um, coming through, next. This is, and I apologize, I didn't get a chance to put all these in the order that maybe I should have, but this is out at our wastewater treatment plant, this is one of our, uh, uh, measurements where we measure the depth of the creek, correct, Rebecca? And, yeah. And I will say, we have, we have two of these, uh, one fared the storm, the other one got washed away, so it's measuring the stream down at Folsom Lake somewhere now. Next. This is where our effluent flows out of the wastewater treatment plant into the creek, correct, Rebecca? And our concern that we were looking at here was the creek gonna come up high enough that it was reversing flow coming back in here, we were worried about that, and if that would have happened, we would have had to shut down this effluent going out to avoid that water coming back in. Am I saying that correct, Rebecca? Thank you. Um, next. So, here's some pictures, uh, this is at the wastewater treatment plant, again, you can see how high the water was, again, we were concerned of it coming over and coming into the plant, uh, at this point, next. This is simply the, the, the storm rain system in the plant was backed up and was bubbling up there, this is one of our drain inlets, and you can see the, the storm water bubbling up in the middle there, so. Next. This is a tree that came down on our fences, that we, we, when we get a break, we will take care of it, it's not really causing any major problems, right Rebecca, but it does need to be taken care of.
Yeah, it just damaged the fence, we did have a downed tree in the creek channel, uh, prior to the storm that disappeared.
Yeah, so, we don't know where that went. All right, next. This is, Rebecca sent me this, this was from the county when she was at the EOC listing the, the road closures, next. Again, out of the plant, now, this is what I, I mentioned, our flow equalization basin, uh, some of you may have been out there when it's empty, um, it's about, what, six feet deep, seven feet deep?
About seven.
Seven? Uh, will hold one point five?
One point two MGD.
One point two million gallons is what it will hold. So, when you think about that and those numbers that we talked about, um, in fact, maybe if we could, why don't, why don't we go through that process? Dave and Regina, can you pull up that PDF document? And Rebecca, I'll let you walk through that, if you would, please. This will show you kind of the numbers with this and, and where we were at. So, hold on just a minute, Rebecca, make sure Regina can, you ready? Okay, all right, go ahead, Rebecca.
Yes, uh, so, um, what you're looking at here is a readout chart from our SCADA system indicating, uh, the flows, and you can actually see when, um, the runoff and, and the creek level started to rise. Uh, I called out a couple of points on here, so the top line, the tan line, is, uh, the FEB return sump, and what that does is that, that's how it starts generating and, and returning the water back in, because it's not just overflow that goes into the FEB, it's when we do backwash on our filters and things like that, too, it's a, it's a storage place that we can then recirculate the water back in. But what you see there is the sump turning on and then never turning off. It was, it had no place to go, and we were processing it as fast as we can. And what that actually, um, means is, on a regular wet weather flow, we have anywhere between one point five to three point five MGD. Um, peak function, peak operating is four point five or so, and that is the point where things are going fine, operations are moving well, but you don't really want to sustain that level of processing anytime soon. And then, uh, the design of the plant, though, is actually at five point seven MGD, but I really want to express that the design of the MGD, uh, five point seven, is a lot like hitting seven thousand RPMs on your car, and it just, it's not a sustainable level of RPM without immediate damage. So, we don't ever try to push it that way, we've done a really, really diligent job of updating and, you know, reinforcing our, um, our, uh, plant operations, our various equipment out there, we've invested a lot of, um, Measure H and sewer enterprise funds out at the plant over the last four years, and, um, the, the benefit of what we see here is, even though we were essentially drinking from a fire hose, nothing broke. That is amazing. We can't say that that was the case in twenty seventeen, our headworks held up very well in this storm, and this storm was about double the intensity of the twenty seventeen storm. Um, this one ranged between three hundred and fifty to four hundred year storm, based off of our NOAA gauges and the NOAA precipitation charts. So, um, so what that means is, uh, as we took in, once we take in above three point five MGD, we start to fill the flow equalization basin, the FEB, I'm gonna be using a lot of acronyms, so I'll try to be, uh, good about explaining them, too. And, uh, and so, um, one thing to consider is, uh, as we hit that, that peak moment and we start filling the FEB, it's not just the wastewater that we're taking in, because the FEB is open, it's also rainwater that we're taking in. So, in reality, even though it's sized at one point two million gallons, it really only helps us about point eight million gallons. So, um, we did start to, uh, top and overflow into the creek around eight thirty on the morning of, um, December thirty-first, New Year's Eve, and proceeded to do so until, um, early in the morning on, uh, January first. And so, when we, we were able, able to end the spill, which didn't last too terribly long, um, all things considering, uh, it's important to note that the amount of influent that was coming in was actually closer to ten MGD. So, we're talking nearly three times the normal amount of a, of a high peak flow, and it was really drinking from a fire hose for our plant. But the guys did amazing out there, they were very diligent in, in, um, maintaining the operations of the plant, protecting the equipment, processing what they could, and just, when there's, it's a storm this big, you just have to kind of pull up sails, pull anchor and, and go with it, because you're actually gonna do more damage fighting it. So. Um, I think this one does okay, but I'm happy to explain more if you'd like, I might switch microphones, though, because this button's a little, uh, challenging.
Any, any questions? Council on that? This is a...
So, this is, uh, the, let's see, it would be the southwest side of the FEB, this is about the point where it started to, actually, I apologize, no, that's, it's looking, um, in that direction. Um, what you see over there, the break in the fence, and, and that is about the point where it started to overflow into the creek, is on that side.
So, again, I know these, skip around a little bit, so this is, as you can see, down at, uh, Geno Autobody on, uh, Green Valley Road, this is that small tree.
Is your microphone on?
How's that, is that better? Uh, again, on Green Valley Road, um, this is the, the small creek system that goes through there, that did also flood, I think, uh, there were other pictures, I don't know if we have others, but I've seen others, that there was actually more water than that that flowed over that road at one point. I don't believe we ever closed Green Valley Road. Uh, it was shallow enough that we got through there, okay, next. Uh, this is kind of small, I know, but, this, again, just a video of the water at the wastewater treatment plant, next. And that one is real small, so let's just skip that one, next. Uh, Nick, can you help me out, I believe this is off Placerville Drive, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, that's off Placerville Drive between, um, I believe it's called Summit View and Home Depot. It's the area where we had, uh, flooding that was going back into a building, uh, in twenty seventeen.
Right, twenty seventeen, this is where we had a major issue because something got stopped up near this manhole, in this area.
The, the blockage, uh, previously was in the manhole area upstream from that. Uh, the reason I took that video is just to show that, that's one of the manholes, it's, it's on a concrete pedestal right there, it's sealed around the top, but there's, there was an extensive period of time when it was underwater. And there's the, all, all of them in the creek system are like that.
Yeah.
Underwater.
Okay. Next. Okay, so this is down, that's Ferguson, the building in the back? You guys correct me if I say this wrong, but...
So, that, that actually looks like it's, uh, the old Snowland Hospice Building?
Oh, okay.
On, on, on the downstream side of the, uh, Perouse Road Bridge?
Correct.
And there's probably about a foot or two of water going into that building right there, um, if you look, you can see there's a Conex box in the back, that actually floated, and it's kind of diagonal and sideways to the creek channel, if you're cruising by there later date.
Okay, next. This is at Ferguson's, you remember, there's the plumbing store, and then also the spa store that is next door to that. Um, these are pretty dramatic pictures and the amount of water that gets down into there, happens every time we have a decent flood, next. You can see down in there, uh, that would be the, kind of the east side of the building, next. This is, uh, at the front, uh, you can see the front of the building, the spa stack there, and then this is just a ditch that runs down parallel to, um, uh, to Cold Springs Road, next. Inside of, uh, Ferguson's. We actually know someone who works there and gave us this picture, so, next. Um, oh, okay, Toy Tech, so, yeah, this is right, the trail there on, uh, Locust, right? Yeah, next. Uh, this is the, um, courtyard here, I'm trying to think of the name of it, um, on Main Street. Yeah, yeah, there's the Italian restaurant, others, yeah, yes, yeah. Next. This, this picture is there to show, if you see the sand dirt on the, on the sidewalk there, the water was actually bubbling up out of that crack in the front of the door, and washing that sand up there, and that's something we still need to kind of review. Nick, anything you want to talk about on that, or, okay, uh, to figure out what is, what is going on there, so... You're talking about the cisterns, is that what you said? Those were actually filled when we did the Main Street job.
They were filled in twenty fifteen, yeah, we did, we filled them with slurry.
The fear was that if one broke and collapsed, it collapses the road, so we filled them so they would not do that, so, yeah. All right, next. This is on Upper Main, kind of, uh, the independent area, there's a strip of buildings, uh, just, I guess, west of the independent, right? Yeah. Yeah, 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 next. Uh, this is just on others that sandbagged to protect their businesses, sacred roots, next. You can see the water that washed down the middle of there, next. This is, okay, this is on Placerville Drive, um, this is something that was a little bit different, we had a little bit of this in twenty seventeen, but not to this extent. Um, and the debris you see there is mostly stuff that washed over from, uh, Clifton and Warren, uh, that washed away from there, and, uh, next. Next. Lower Main, uh, KFC across the street, you can see there, next. Again, Lower Main, I think you all recognize these pictures, next. In front of Kobe, there's always a pretty good flow that comes down off of that property and, and runs across the road there, next. Again, another picture of Ferguson after the fact, you can, you can see, kind of demonstrates how much flow there was actually down in the bottom there, so, next. And this is again, this is at the skate shop, uh, there's another better picture than this that shows the waterfall, next. Up on, uh, Upper Main, that was the old brewery that was there across from the independent, kind of, so this is looking east, next. Same approximate place, next. This is down on Placerville Drive, again, we talked about that, this is looking, looking east rather than the other one was looking from the west, there's that little market there you can see on the left, and, next. Again, still Placerville Drive, yeah. More, this is just a little video of Placerville Drive, gentleman trying to clear the road over there, some of the debris, next. Next. Yeah, and these are the vehicles that we're actually driving through, and this is, we, we did close Placerville Drive at one point, right Nick? And, or did we? We never did? Okay, all right. Next. Uh, this is a sinkhole that opened up, uh, this is below Rayleigh's, I don't know if you've been down there to see it, on that hillside below the, uh, on the, between Placerville Drive and the Rayleigh's parking lot, um, uh, there is a broken pipe, storm drain pipe right in, in there, right? And, uh, we'll, we'll need to get that repaired, uh, brings water down from, like, the, uh, Rayleigh Drive, the fairgrounds, et cetera, so, next. Again, that's the picture, so you can kind of get your bearings where that's at, the sinkhole, next. Uh, we'll just go through these quickly, these are some that we picked up from, from somebody, next. Again, these are all in that, that courtyard back there, I believe, next. 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 And, uh, those are those stores that were up on, uh, Main, yeah, yeah, next, yeah, you see the Polaris, yeah, next. Uh, okay, yeah, this is where it flows over, it was flowing over at the skate shop, it was coming out onto Main Street, next. Help me out, where are we? Is that Placerville Drive? No, Main, Main Street again, I guess, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, next. This was the, the, no, that's the Veterans' Bill Hall down on the fairgrounds, yeah, yeah, next. Sierra Tire, next. This is, um, Smith Flat Road, and there's a video, come up here in a minute, of driving down Smith Flat Road, we'll show you, next. This is on, on Smith Flat Road again, at, what's that road, cross is, next? What? Seven Springs Road? Okay, next. Another one, same spot, or up farther? Farther up, yeah. You see the amount of water, next. Green Valley Road, right?
No, that's at Spring and Tunnel.
Spring and Tunnel, okay, right, all right, okay. So, this was another one that I don't remember two thousand seventeen having an impact, that we were impacted. Next. Sinkhole developed, uh, this is on Bedford, if you've gone through there, you've seen the road is closed, uh, as soon as we can come up for air, we will repair, get that repaired. This is a good example, though, when we talk about, I'll talk about funding for these in a minute when we get done, next. Oh, that's it, that's all, okay. All right, um, before, before I finish, I wanted to give just a minute for Nick, or Rebecca, or Dan to talk about any, uh, issues that they observed, and just briefly, Nick, anything you want to add to what we've talked about?
I, I think the pictures tell the story pretty good, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Rebecca?
Um, I think it's just, uh, kind of important to note that there isn't really a set of design standards that could accommodate the kind of water that we experience.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, normally our streets and storm systems are designed to hold a ten-year flood?
Correct, and, uh, we design them as such, and sometimes we're actually even a little bit more generous, and then our bridges over creeks are one foot freeboard for fifty-year, zero freeboard, which means the waters at the bridge soffit, uh, for a hundred-year storm. Um, for rivers, they give more freeboard, but, uh, in this particular case, um, with, just given the volume of the storm, there's nothing you could do.
Dan, anything you'd like, Commander Machiel, want to add?
Just that, um, our, our department is the primary collection point for any storm-related calls, so we relay them to Public Works if it's a, a Public Works issue, or our officers go out and handle what we can, helping with road closures. When we have those types of heavy rain, um, something happens with the phone lines, where we get a lot of nine-one-one calls that are static, that our officers are responsible to respond to, to make sure that it is, in fact, not an emergency, and just like a storm-related issue. Other than that, that's, that's really all I have.
Okay, okay. So, a couple, one, one picture we did not have, and I apologize, we should have gotten this, it is always upon another area, is, um, Wilsey Road, um, and it doesn't take much for Wilsey to, to start flooding, so, but, another area we may want to look at for the future of how we might can, can repair things and make them better. So, as, uh, I mentioned in my report, uh, the, the, the goal of establishing an emergency is hopefully for any, um, damages that we do have, uh, if it's declared by the state and funding is, uh, put out by the state, we have potential to recover funding to, to do our repairs. Uh, you've kind of seen what some of those are, the, the two, the two sinkholes, there's at least two, there's maybe a couple more right now.
There's two that we know of at this time.
Okay. Um, in addition to that, uh, Terry is not here from Parks and Recreation, but I know out at Goldbug Park, they had some hills that sloughed off a little bit, and there's some, probably some repairs we're gonna have to do out there. Uh, Goldbug Park is closed at this time, uh, not many people coming out in the rain this time of year, anyway, but, um, it's closed, at least through the weekend, uh, until we can figure out, uh, if it's safe, make sure it's safe for, for people to go back out there. So, as I mentioned, we declared an emergency, the county declared an emergency, our, um, proclamation was sent to the state, uh, they have it, we have received correspondence from the state, uh, Dave Warren is working with them on getting them information, as soon as we can evaluate what our, our damages are, we will, uh, let them know that, because that will help them determine whether or not, uh, they, you know, put funding behind their proclamation. Uh, like I say, the state did declare an emergency, the governor did, but they have not put any funding, uh, to reimburse at this time, but they are looking at that and considering that. So, um, the, the issue before you today is whether or not to continue this emergency. After Wednesday, I felt like, well, do we need to continue the emergency? Because Wednesday, Thursday really didn't pan out what we thought it was going to be. However, um, uh, the information I'm seeing, receiving right now is that Monday, Tuesday could be similar to our December 30th, 31st, uh, event that we had. And so, for that reason, it is my recommendation that we continue with the emergency at this time. Uh, the only reason, again, that I put the 24th on there is that that's your next regular meeting after the 10th, it would be after at least the 9th, 9th, 10th, uh, flood, and we could determine at that time. Should give us time to start knowing how much damage we have, and whether or not we want to continue it at that point. It's my recommendation that we would continue it if we, uh, have not identified all the damage at that time, we may need to continue it so that we have that process set up to collect the damage, uh, find out what it is, and what the costs are going to be to, to repair those. Don't necessarily have to have them all done by the time we, um, do that, uh, stop the emergency, but we would at least want to maybe know, be, be finished with our analysis so we know how much damage we have. With that, unless any of my staff has anything else to add, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Councilmember No, and answering, we'll have to answer any questions.
Great. Does the council have any questions or comments before we open it to public comment?
Yeah, I got a quick question. So, um, with our water treatment plant, I mean, obviously seeing what the weather reports are coming in, I mean, we're expecting about one to two inches with the Saturday, Sunday storm, and three to five come Monday, Tuesday. How quickly, considering our saturation level, is the plant going to end up reaching capacity again? Or do we have an idea?
Um, I mean, if, based on the estimation of three to five inches, it could happen within 24 to 36 hours, um, but it really all depends on how the creek level goes. Once the creek level rises, there is a direct correlation that impacts our plant. So, um, you know, we do take on INI, uh, even in, in the pipes that are not just in the creek, but also the pipes that are in the ground, because our groundwater table is obviously at surface level, you know this. And so what happens is you have that hydrostatic pressure that pushes on the pipes and all the fittings, and then you get INI, even the best and newest sewer systems will experience some INI at that point.
So, at that point, when does it start, when and does it start affecting the city water system? Actually, coming out of the tap, is what I'm talking about?
Um... It, it does not.
It does not, yeah, it, water systems are built a lot differently than sewer systems because they are designed to operate under pressure both internally and externally. So, they have, um, mechanical fittings that are not like push fittings like a sewer pipe would be. Um, the push fittings is where the INI would come in versus the mechanical joints on a sewer, on a, uh, water distribution system which is designed, the pipes are just stronger, um, I mean, there's a whole bunch of factors why the water actually holds better, um, because if anything, the, the hydrostatic pressure that pushes on the pipe equalizes, so, um, but the sewer main, though, it's meant to operate under, other than when it's in a lift station pump capacity, it's meant to operate as a gravity flow, so pressure does actually really start to bother it.
Can I, can I add there too, Rebecca, help me out here? Um, the flow equalization basin that you saw there is empty, we've emptied that out, it was emptied as of, I believe, Monday night, Tuesday morning?
Yes.
Um, so it is empty and prepared to, you know, for the next storm. Currently, I think we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 2 million gallons per day coming in?
Uh, right now, we are sitting right around 2.
So, we're, we're able to process everything and not flowing into that, that basin, so I think we're as prepared as we can be for the next storm.
Right.
That might come, and again, want to emphasize that, yeah, this, this did not affect, uh, there was one comment that perhaps what was happening in our wastewater plant was, was the reason for the notice we got from EID for conservation, that had nothing to do with that. Uh, that notice was simply the turbidity coming into their system from above made it much more difficult for them to process the water that was coming in. Again, that water comes from up above, our wastewater treatment is well down below the city, so.
I, I have a question, um, in 17, one of the challenges at the plant was the, just the junk that got flushed into the system, rocks and other things. Was it as, was it similar this time, or has that been mitigated?
No, um, it, it wasn't as large a material, you're, you're referring to the big old cobble rocks, the pillars, yeah, it was a lot.
It ended up at the screen, yeah.
Yeah, so we, uh, you know, um, I gotta count the blessings where they are, you know, we broke everything enough in 2017 that we repaired everything enough since then, and our plant's pretty stable, so, uh, we had grit, we certainly had a ton of grit. Um, we actually called on Public Works to help us, uh, pull out some of that grit, and they've, uh, been very helpful and supportive, and so we, uh, we replaced the, the grit classifier at the headworks, we actually did quite a bit of work at the headworks as a result of the 2017 storm damage. The headworks operated great in this storm, and this storm, I, I want to point out, that storm was about 129, 130-year storm, this one is like double that, and it performed better. So, um, and we had, uh, some issues before with our clarifiers, um, I really just have to, um, be just counting my blessings with how Measure H and Sewer Enterprise Funds have helped us fund, um, significant amounts of improvements and investments out at the plant, we have other projects still in the works happening, but the work that we have done over the last four years was instrumental in keeping our plant whole and solvent during this entire storm.
Thank you.
And just, we did have, we did have some smaller, uh, gravel type...
We did, we had grit, yeah.
Stuff, grit coming in there, and we do, we do need to clean that out, I don't know that they've been able to do that yet, I don't think.
No, we have to get a Mini-X and pull a lot of it out, we tried to put, pick it up at the Vector, but it's about the consistency of AB, of aggregate base, and so it's been, you know, a little heavier to pick up, um, than, you know, just the regular stuff we see.
I'm sure there's pictures of 17, the stuff that was there, it was pretty dramatic.
Yeah, we had pretty big cobbles, yeah.
So, yeah.
Nicole? Okay, great, we'll open this up to the public for public comment.
Counsel, if it's all right with you, uh, maybe we could start with Zoom attendees, a public comment with them first. Um, if you are joining by your PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen, and unmute yourself when called upon, if you're calling by phone, you'll press star six to unmute yourself, we'll go ahead and start with, well, we just have one, um, with their hand raised, well, it's caller with the last three digits, 857, um, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening, uh, good morning, City Council. Hey, just giant kudos to Cleve or whoever got the creek cleared of so much debris just months ago. If you hadn't done that, the flooding would have been just incredibly worse. So, giant kudos, and I think that needs to be a yearly summer thing, is clearing the creek of all the scrub, so that when we have this, these storms, and, uh, we reduce the, the flooding damage. Um, giant thank yous to the city crews, um, out there, if they, everyone was overwhelmed, and even individuals out clearing storm drains in their neighborhood and pulling debris out of the road, so, great job, city. I would like the city to help those of us to pay flood insurance, if we can update the map saying this was a 300-year flood, 400-year flood, whatever it was, I survived damage, my, um, flood premium might go down if I survived a 400-year flood, other people are probably going to have increased flood rates, given all the flooding we had, but if we can update FEMA's really ancient maps, that would help. So that was it, just giant kudos, um, yearly creek cleanout, uh, update the flood maps, and great job, guys, and we'll get, do it again all on Monday, thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, we have one more, Barbara, go ahead.
Good morning, I want to echo what the prior caller said, I cannot thank you guys enough for, I had no idea that you cleaned a creek all the way up, uh, behind the stores and historic Main Street. I think you heard me and, and my son when we came and talked to you about the issues of the garbage in the creek behind the skate, uh, below the skate park, and, um, I just can't thank you enough because I, in 17, that water backwashed a lot closer to the skate shop than it did this time, so, thank you, Cleve and staff, for getting, um, I know the Rotary came in, and then Grouseburg came in, great job, and I, I just want to commend all of you for the hard work that you do, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, at this time, we can go ahead and move to in-person public comments.
Anyone from the audience?
Good morning, City Council. Uh, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. A proclamation of a state of emergency for Placerville is necessary to put us in line for, for any aid from the state of California, those are just the rules of the game. Without it, we are on our own to make any needed repairs from the ongoing storm damage. The governor has issued a state of emergency for the entire state, we are not alone in dealing with the problems from these storms, as the news will tell you. Making time, making the timeframe last through the Second City Council meeting for January is wise, it provides time to make some repairs and evaluate how much more time and repairs are needed. All of us who live in Placerville owe a huge thank you to our city workforce that have been dealing with these storms. Those are the people who've been out there at 3:00 AM in the rain and the mud to keep the rest of us safe and fix the damage. The city also owes a big thank you to the residents of Placerville, who were far sighted enough to pass both Measure H and Measure L. That funding and its wise investment put the city in shape to handle these storms without collapse of our water treatment plant, or more damage to our streets and water systems. Hydrologists and engineers try to estimate time intervals for large storm events as 100-year storms, 200-year storms, 500-year storms, to help size infrastructure to handle the load. But just like earthquakes, volcanoes, and wildfires, the real-time intervals are unknown. There have been three large, 100-year-plus storm events in this area over the last 26 years. 1997 was one that took out roads and culverts all over the Eldorado National Forest, I worked for the forest, so I was here for that one. 2017 was another one that landed a boulder in the main sewer line and caused major damage to our water treatment plant. Now, it is 2023, only six years later, and our treatment plant pulled through so far, thanks to the investments we made to maintain and repair it. Good job, Placerville, let's keep it up, and let's be sure to size our infrastructure for these 200-year storms, since they seem to happen a lot more often.
Thank you, Sue. Would anyone else from the audience like to speak? No, seeing no one, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion. Cleve, you have something?
Just one comment, uh, Ms. Rodman did also submit a written comment, uh, anyway, you have it before you, similar to what she has just, just stated. Um, the other thing I want to mention quickly, uh, Mr. Ivas, our Development Services Director, is not here today, but I believe he has informed me that, uh, the FEMA maps are actually are under review at this time, and I think over the next year or two, I think they're supposed to be updating those, so, um, that process is going on currently.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you, um. Yes, kudos to all the staff and everyone, you know, I, I went out pretty early in the morning and saw what was going on, on whatever that day was, Saturday, I guess, it was amazing, um, they don't get nearly enough recognition, and certainly they should. Couple of things, actually, if you go out to Goldbug and go into Goldbug Park when you've had this much rain, it's kind of interesting because it rains inside the mine, you can go in there and there's like water going down through, it's pretty cool, actually. If you have a big truck and you are compelled to drive through water, and who doesn't like to do that? If you go too fast and you start washing all that floodwater back up into the buildings, you're really not doing anybody any favors, it's a tough call, but, you know, please don't do that. Um, you know, one of the intriguing things is, I guess what I should say is, I've lived in town for over 40 years, um, I, I know someone who was born here, we all agree, this was the worst we've ever seen, I've never seen anything like it, I was down, I actually worked on Main Street, I worked at Coldwell Banker in 86, and it did flood a little bit at, um, Canal, in that low spot, nothing like what I saw the other day, I mean, I had never seen anything like that, um, all throughout town. And this is an interesting thing, and this is really a discussion for a different day, but, what I think is intriguing is Clay Street, because Clay Street doesn't flood, and that's, really needs to inform the project that's out there and what we're being required. You know, it was easy enough in 2017 to demonstrate that, we have, all have pictures, but to show what happened with a much higher flood flow going down through Hangtown Creek, and what did, wasn't happening at Clay Street, yet it was happening on either end of, if you walked in either direction, you could find places where it was flooding, I think that information needs to inform that discussion. And anyway, um, just kudos to everybody, um, government employees don't get enough credit, uh, they tend to be the objects of, of idiocy on social media, um, and that doesn't mean that they're perfect, but, um, they did a really good job. Anyway, that, that's kind of it for me, I, of course, I think we ought to extend this thing and, you know, to whenever, and see what happens on Monday.
Um, I'd also just want to thank all of our staff, um, I know what it's like to do long fieldwork on holidays and weekends out in inclement weather, um, I'm happy that's not part of my job anymore, so, um, I understand how difficult that is, and, you know, you're really doing something that's very, very important for our, our city, um, and, uh, I love what you guys do, and I just want, uh, you guys to know that, um, and I'm, I'm also happy to hear that, you know, our FEB is back down to having capacity, I know that was one of my questions, I was like, I hope we've gotten back to where we need to be going into the next storm, so, thank you very much, and I also, um, support extending this to our next, uh, regular scheduled meeting on the 24th.
Okay, I just want to echo those comments with our staff, I mean, they give up time with their fa, their families and work late, and people don't always think about that, people say, oh, it's their job, but, you know, what a job it is, so, thank you to the staff. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Councilmember, did, did you want to see, can we check and see?
Oh, yeah, Michael.
Vice Mayor Saragosa has any comments? We've kind of forgotten.
He's on vacation, I mean, come on.
At least we can check.
No, I, thank you, I, no, I echo all the sentiments that my colleagues already stated, want to thank everybody, I, I feel bad I wasn't there, uh, but, uh, with that, I will go ahead and, and make a motion to, uh, extend the, um, uh, the declaration till the 24th.
Great, you have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Can we have roll call?
Can I get a clarification on the second?
David?
I second for extending the, uh, state of emergency for City Placerville.
Thank you, Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, that moves us to number six, a German, thank, me and Mark, thank you for all your weather reports. Oh, if you'd like to give us an update, that'd be great.
Thank you very much, I joked with Cleve earlier that we would know Wednesday morning how we did. Uh, it just changed this morning, and it's good, there's three basic models, forecast models that the world uses, and, uh, they were all in complete agreement that this next big Monday storm would hit somewhere in the, let's just say, Golden Gate Marin County area, and then sweep across central Sierra, and it would put us pretty bullseyish. This morning, one of those models slipped out of agreement and threw it north, uh, more towards Redding, um, they could certainly use the water, so, um, there is a very high likelihood that that model will give itself up and come back, so, we'll really know by about Sunday morning, the flip-flop will stop, or maybe, maybe a little bit sooner. Problem is, is that, starting tonight, we're going to get some pretty continuous rain, so our system's going to be right at the edge of triggering, um, and there's high confidence in that rain arriving, probably three inches over the weekend, um, so, I will let Cleve know how we do, um, it, it looks much different than the kind of busted forecast of the big wind that we just had, didn't minus the rain. This particular, uh, atmospheric river that's coming in Monday, it actually originated in Guam, that's where the storm originated. That's where the storm originated in on New Year's Eve, and there's just a huge connection